...under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's have a hand for our scout, Troop 10. Thank you. Okay, all right. I'm not going to, I think I will dispense with the normal discussions about the rules of order. I think that's all pretty fresh in our minds, having just been at town meeting about five days ago. So, we left the meeting at the budget, reviewing of the town budget. I did also just want to caution, if anybody is a visitor, this is one thing I want to make, the visitors need to sit up here in the, on my left, the right of the hall, and unless they are department heads, and I ask the department heads or people from the town government to meet, to sit over there on the left, my right. So, the selectmen are going to make a presentation first about the budget. What's your point of order? Not working? All right, the motion is, I believe, being made to reconsider Articles 13 and 14 of the water department budget. I have to ask you, how did you vote on that, those articles? Right, I think 13 and 14 both passed. This is-
I can tell you why, why I came up with-
All right, very briefly, because we, this is going to require a nine-tenth vote to reconsider.
Right. Well, you know, I think it's worth the residents of Townsend's time, everybody wants things above board and fair. Given the new information, ethics and everything, and things that I talked about last week regarding Lunenburg Road, I believe it's worth reconsidering. I found out some new information today also about Lunenburg Road. I was told last, at last meeting, that there was PFAS in the water, and that's why they have to do Lunenburg Road and put the new pipes down. I was told something different today. They were the class action suit, okay, against you find other makers, manufacturers, products that give off PFAS. They're going to wait to get that class action money, we don't know how much it's going to be, but to pay off the loan for Lunenburg Road and the Townsend pipes that go through. So, that doesn't make any sense to me, we don't know how much that-
All right, Ms. Lloyd, I think that that's something beyond the scope of the meeting tonight, please.
Well, also, by the way, how can you trust the people that are not from our water- with the FX violation that was put in place? What else are they not telling us?
All right, all right, I think we're getting beyond the scope, I think we can put it to a vote. Is there a second tier motion to reconsider?
Yes.
All right, we need it in writing. We need the motion to reconsider Articles 13 and 14 in writing, signed by the second. Article 11. All right. Aha, Mr. Wrightout is here, good. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to reconsider Articles 13 and 14 concerning, from the annual town meeting, concerning the department budget. And requires a nine-tenths vote to approve reconsideration on the second night of the town meeting. Is there anything to be said? All right, appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor of reconsideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it, does not pass by nine-tenths vote. That brings us to the budget, where we left off last Wednesday, and I'd like to ask the selectmen to make their presentation. Basically, we're going to try to keep things to a minimum tonight, so I'm going to ask everybody to use restraint in the verbiage, because I think no one wants to come back here, maybe Thursday night, I know Betty May doesn't, for a town meeting. So, I'm going to ask the boards, the select boards, to make their presentations, the FinCom to make their comments, and then we'll go through the budget.
Point of order? Mr. Moderator, could you ask, through you, to the town administrator to enlarge the text on the screen so we could see it?
Okay, good point. Mr. Murray, can you enlarge that so people can see it, out in the balcony? If that's possible? Yeah. Will that pull back? Yeah, try that then, maybe. Uh-oh. Maybe it's got to go forward. That's better, I think. Mr. Huzzy. Ma, can you use the microphone? I can barely hear you, I don't know if anybody else can.
Can you hear me now? Okay, the FinCom would like to reaffirm our recommendation, or not recommendation, of the budget, just for the people that have not heard it yet, if that's okay.
Well, I think what we're going to have to do, as we go through the budget, if you folks want to make changes to the selectmen's budget, you can do so, but we're reviewing the selectmen's budget, we're not going to do that over again.
Yeah.
We already decided that issue, about which budget we're reviewing.
We understand that, but we did recommend not to accept this budget, and if we have to list reasons, we could certainly do that. And we also are not recommending the override.
All right. Now, everybody see, and there was a handout, I think everybody should have gotten the handout. Mrs. Lloyd, I'm going to recognize the selectmen first, because we've got to get going here. All right, Ms. Grigson.
Can everybody hear me? Yet, no? No, of course not. These microphones are, now can you? Yes, okay, thank you. These microphones are not as good as those ones. I wanted, first of all, thank everybody for coming again to discuss the budget, it's been eight hours, and I think it's a testament to this community that you keep coming back and trying to do something that is part of annual town meeting. And I really personally appreciate it, and I know that the employees of Townsend really want to see us vote on the budget tonight. You don't have to agree or disagree, you can choose no, you can choose yes, but I really appreciate every one of you sticking in to hear this budget tonight, and I know I'm not alone in that. And I'm new to this board, it hasn't been an easy process. You never want to come into a board for the first time and be seeing that you have to reduce salaries and wages to get a balanced budget. Really, really disheartening and frustrating, but I think that this budget really needs to be heard by you and voted on, and I want to thank you all for coming again tonight, after eight hours. We really appreciate it.
Okay, comments come on. The motion, which previously was made on Article 11. Does anybody need that motion read again? Everybody knows we're dealing with the budget, right? Okay. Yeah, right, right. I just want to make sure, everybody knows what page we're on. It's Article 11, the town budget, and Ms. Kell.
I just want to reiterate what Bowe said, thank you all for being here, and I want to just take a minute, two, or three, to go over the format of the budget that you're being asked to address. So, if you all have this handout, if you could get that out, and I don't know if it's being projected. This is the omnibus budget, which means that it puts together the budgets of all the departments. There are nine functional segments in our budget, and they are delineated by the bold black line. So, if you look first at line 254, and I don't know if that's up there or not, but if you go to line 254 in the budget, you will see that it says general government total. I'll address the columns in a little bit, but can you all hear me? No? Pardon me? They told me not to do that. They told me to have it off to the side here, right here. Okay, good. All right, so 254 is one of those bolded lines. Everything before it is the departments that are part of general government. If you look at line 501, you see public safety. Everything that is between lines 256 and 501 is public safety. Those are all the departments. And 510 is education, it's one of the smaller ones, because we don't put the education budgets into our document in their entirety, only their final lines. And going on, you'll see 568 for highways and streets, 582 for solid waste, 695 for human services, 745 for culture and recreation, and I know I'm going through these quickly. Debt service is 765, and insurance is 803. Those two functional segments do not have departments within them, they're just things that we as a town need to pay. All right, so, within a functional segment, the departments are delineated. So, go to the very first line of general government, so this is line 1. If you look, the very first thing is the select board, and 1 through 9 is personnel, and the personnel total is on line 10. Expenses are in lines 12 through 22, and the expenses total is on line 23. So, for every department, we have personnel, and then we have expenses. So, when you're looking at this, this is what you're looking at. And the same is true, if you go down to accounting, you'll see 37 through 48, I'm sorry, 37 through 40 are personnel, and 43 through 48 are the expenses in the accounting department. So, every department is split into personnel and expenses, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but as we go through this, I, we thought it would help if you were aware of that. So, are there any questions on functional segments and departments, how it's laid out, the format of the budget?
Yep, sir.
Why is the percent change column blank?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear-
Say that again, I couldn't hear you.
Why is the percent change column blank?
Oh, you mean that column? The notes, if you look at the notes column, I haven't addressed columns yet, but if you look at the notes column, you'll see that, you can see the percent change from FY25. And if you look at the functional segments line, the black bolded, that's where the percent change from FY25 comes in. Does that help? Okay, thank you. All right, the next thing to address is the columns. What do the columns mean? So, if you look at the columns of the budget, FY25 is the current budget year, this is what we're working to in FY25, and it's there for comparison purposes. FY26 with the override is one column, and FY26 with reductions is the far right. Those two columns have exactly the same numbers as you look down them, they are exactly the same, until you get to line 253. And on line 253, and this is true for each functional segment that has departments in it, it says salaries, wages, reduction, total. So, all the way to the right, those two budgets are exactly the same, however, that line right before the total for the functional segment has the amount of reduction that the select board is putting forward to the town for reduction in salaries and wages in order to balance our budget. That column, FY26 with reductions, is what you are voting on in this article. When we go back to the special town meeting to consider an override, if an override is being considered, those reductions will be, will be fine, they won't be incorporated in the budget, and the budget will be exactly as is. So, the two budgets are exactly the same as you're looking at them, but the one to the right shows the reduction in salaries and wages right before each functional segment. If the override that we're considering is voted, then those reductions will be restored if the vote is positive. Are there questions on that?
So, the, Chris Leroy, 102 Pierce Road, the only reductions are in wages and salaries, is that what you're trying to outline here?
In this budget, that's true, however, you recall that we did ask for, we talked about an override in March that was much larger, we, the override failed, we cut things between March and April, we cut things again between April and this budget. So, and actually, our town administrator will address that in just a few minutes. I'm just going over the format here. Any other questions on the format of the budget?
Mr. Moderator.
And how you understand it?
Mr. Moderator, through you-
Ms. Craven?
Yes, I do have a question as to format. It appears that with this functional category budget, we will not have transparency with a department line-by-line budget. Are we out of order to request a line-by-line budget?
Ms. Craven, I was going to address that after Ms. Kell spoke.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
The choice, I think, that we have here as a town is, in reviewing the budget, there's two basic ways of doing it. Historically, we used to do a line item department budget, and that could take quite a bit of time. Later on, a functional segment approach was developed, so that when the town voted with a functional segment, it would only be voting on each functional segment, and that made things, I think, a bit easier and quicker to go through. But, the concept behind the functional segment is that the select board would be able to move some monies between the different departments in that functional segment, as needed by the town. If we vote things on a department basis, those numbers are fixed for that department, and you can, the departments may be able to move with, usually with the select board and the, depending on which department it is, but, at the FinCom's approval, they can change some line item within their department, but a money can't go from one department to another in the functional segment. So, the first thing I think we have to decide is how, which approach we're going to take in adopting the budget. The line item budget, and I would suggest that we don't have to go through the line item budget line by line, we can still look at it in the context of things that are in the functional segment, and if people have questions or concerns about the functional, a particular item, line item, they can make a motion to change it, or if they have questions, they can ask a question. We're going to be going off the selectmen's numbers, and so if people want to make changes on those lines, we can do that. But, again, the first thing we have to decide, if we're going to use the functional segment approach or the departmental approach. So, I'm going to ask for a, I guess, a show of hands, or I'm going to ask for a call, a vote on, all those in favor of doing a functional segment, please say aye. All right, those that favor a department, departmental budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay. Well, it's got a kind of a close call there, and maybe it was confused, because I did two ayes.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Moderator?
Point of order? Point of order? Point of order? Are we allowed to make comments before we have this vote?
Yes, but I, limited.
Limited. I just want to make a correction, that in the past, we did, years ago, we did do the line item, which was, which was a nightmare.
I think I said that.
Yeah, we switched to the segments, not for, we didn't remove transparency from each and every line item, we just went to voting on segments collectively, but every single person in the room had the budget with the line item numbers were filled out. We didn't have a blank sheet of paper with just functional segments, we had every single line item had a number in it.
Right.
But we just didn't vote on each single line item, that was the only change. Today, we're being asked to look at a budget which just has functional segments, and we're not allowed to know what's going on in the individual line item.
Well, Ms. King, I think what I was trying to address is the fact that there seems to be some confusion about what does it mean to vote a functional segment budget? And to my understanding, there is a line of thought that in a functional segment budget, the monies within that functional segment can be moved around in between departments.
I never heard of that.
Well, that's my understanding, and if that's in error, maybe Mr. Costas can address that, but... Or, Ms. Kell?
So, I do have a comment, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, if I could. So, what you've stated, Mr. Moderator, is correct. I started representing the town of Townsend in 2018, so I don't know what occurred prior to that, but my understanding, through conversations with town officials, is that in years prior, you had voted a departmental budget, where each and every departmental line item is voted by town meeting. That provides for very little flexibility for the administration within a fiscal year, because money cannot be moved from department to department. So, if you vote a specific dollar amount for a department, and a second department, and a third department, for a total of, let's say, 15 or 20 departments within the general government segment, those monies must remain within the department within the fiscal year. Beginning in or around 2018, under an earlier administration, Townsend began voting a functional segment budget. Now, that doesn't mean that town meeting didn't review, as you are reviewing tonight, the full line item budget. You review the same line item budget, you see the departments, you see the line items within the departments, you debate those departments, and you debate those line items to the extent that you see fit. But when you proceed to a vote, you're voting the functional segments, you're voting general government, you're voting public safety, you're voting municipal debt. And by voting the functional segments and not the departments, it provides flexibility to move the money within the department. What you should also know is that it also provides the administration that flexibility, so that when you're reducing, or you think you're reducing line items or departmental line items, you're ultimately, what you're reducing by way of vote is the functional segment. But either way, you're reviewing the same budget, the same line item budget, it's still showing every line item, it's still showing every department, it's just a question of what you're voting. Are you voting those departments and locking them in the way you see them on paper? Or are you voting the functional segments that are summarized on the warrant? The latter is the way you've been doing it since I've been here for the past seven years.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Costa. Ms. Craven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kim Creven, 87 Lunenburg Road. When we have a functional segment and it is rolled out, for example, I'm going to use small numbers, if it's $100 in that segment, and it's council on aging, and it's parks and cemeteries, and it's board of health, should the board of selectmen want to move $20 to council on aging, and we thought it was going to Parks and Cemetery, they can do so. If it is a department budget, as I would agree with our moderator, going line by line within the department would be an arduous process. But for us to know as a community, that if we're giving $80 to council on aging, and $20 to Parks and Cemetery, that that's the budget, because there is a process by which the FinCom and the board of selectmen can be, meet jointly at the request of a department head to do interdepartmental transfers within the government, with both boards coming together. So, it's not like money cannot be transferred at a later time, there is a process where both boards can do that, just like at the end of the year, they can do transfers within the different department heads, by both of them signing off on it. By going department, not line by line, and not functional segment, but by each department, so that each department head knows exactly what their budget is for the year, there's no surprises for them, and there's no surprises for us. So, I was a little bit confused, Mr. Moderator, by two yeses, I think it's easier if we go with your typical protocol, yes to a functional or no to a functional, yes to a line item, no to a department, so that we are crystal clear. But I would advocate, with all the questions that we have within our community, that we go department by department, so we know exactly what our department heads have to work with for the year.
Thank you. Ms. Craven, comments come on the budget. Mrs. Spofford?
Kathleen Spofford, 312 Main Street. In reviewing the budget, I noticed that on line 253, and it goes throughout the budgets for each segment, that there's salary, wages, reduction, total. So, how do we vote on that? Because that means the deduction can be taken from any wage or salary, and we're not going to know where it's coming from. And I don't understand that at all.
Okay, comments come on the budget on the line 253. Ms. Kell?
We have five unions that have contracts, and we also have personal services contracts. For this reduction, we have to impact bargain. That means that if salaries are being reduced, we need to speak with the unions and the non-union personnel for, to agree on how this is being done, and I think I'd like Attorney Costa to explain why it is that we can't do that prior to the budget being set.
Mr. Moderator, through you. I think Selectwoman Kell summarized it quite well. I mean, the reality is, and it's not unique to Townsend, that many municipalities in Massachusetts have a fair number of municipal employees that are union employees. You have a fair number here in Townsend. And making commitments with respect to reductions, wage reductions, staffing reductions, those commitments cannot be made on the floor of town meeting, they can't be made in a selectmen's meeting prior to impact bargaining those particular changes. And so, that's a process that involves meeting with the union reps and negotiating the particular changes that are proposed. And so, not only is it impossible for the select board to make commitments in a proposed budget with respect to where cuts will be made, not knowing if those cuts, staffing reductions, reduction of hours, will successfully be bargained with those unions, it would also be unwise for it to stand here in an open public meeting and tell all of you where it intends to make cuts and how it intends to make those cuts, in a manner that could potentially impact its negotiating position at the negotiating table. So, I know it's- So, I know it's an uncomfortable answer, I know that all of you as voters like to know, as you should know, as much information as possible to make informed decisions and to make informed votes, but this is just a challenge that exists when you have to negotiate with different bargaining units, and it's not, again, not unique to Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Ms. Spofford.
Kathleen Spofford, 312 Main Street. So, in Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 150E, Section 6, it says, "The employer and the exclusive representatives shall meet at reasonable times, including meetings in advance of the employer's budget-making process." This has not been done. You've known that there's going to be budget cuts, and you've had plenty of time to address this with the unions. I had put in a public records request regarding emails going back and forth as to when meetings have been requested to be set up, and I received a response saying there are no records pertinent to the request. So, I don't understand how we can go through this budget and not be better informed. I don't think due diligence has been done, and I would like to move that the town vote to adjourn and dissolve this meeting due to that fact.
I'll second that.
Well, we have a motion on the floor already to determine whether or not we're going to proceed with the budget on a department, department basis or a functional segment basis. All right. That was my entreaty to the town to make a decision about that. So, there is no motion on that score. Therefore, there is a motion to adjourn and dissolve the meeting.
And I seconded that, although I did have a question for Mr., for Attorney Costas as well, Mr. Moderator.
Well, obviously, dissolving the meeting without a budget has some consequences for the town. It puts everybody up in the air. I know that we can go to a 1/12 budget, but I'll ask then, Mr. Costa, if you can comment on the consequences of dissolving this meeting. And ultimately, it's up to the town, the meeting here, to decide that.
Mr. Moderator, I think you said it quite well. It's always recommended by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, and it's good financial and municipal practice to establish your budget for the upcoming fiscal year prior to the start of the upcoming fiscal year. With that said, it's not a legal requirement that you do so. It is a legal requirement, however, that you have a balanced budget prior to establishing the tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. That tax rate is not established until sometime around, and just prior to the first of the year. And so, you could meet again in July, August, September, October, and at that point, you could revisit the budget, but in the meantime, you effectively have a level-funded budget, and you may need to ultimately make corrections to the budget for the latter part of the fiscal year, particularly if you're operating at a deficit, to account for those difficulties. So, it's challenging in any year for a municipality to adopt, or to not adopt, a balanced budget, even when there aren't such things as overrides being considered, but it's particularly challenging in circumstances like these, where you have a budget proposed by the Select Board, potential amendments proposed by your finance committee, and a, an override question, or an appropriation pursuant to an override article on your special Town Meeting warrant, with an anticipated override vote at the ballot box.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
Mr. Moderator, may I speak to the motion?
And I have another person down here waiting to speak, Ms. Craven. And, Ms.? Lysio.
Sulisio, 28 Ash Street, Townsend. If...
Can't hear you.
If we were to go to a 1/12 budget, it would be a mirror of this year's budget. In this year's budget, we have trash. And we voted the last time to create a new account for trash, and a new way of doing trash, because we're not going to have enough money. We also talked the other night about two temporary, I'll call them interim, contracts with the trash provider. It's, this is getting a little crazy. I mean, I came here to vote on the budget. I have a feeling for what I want to vote, both on the budget and on the override, and I'm sure other people have feelings that they want it too. And I'd like to hear what my fellow voters have to say about it. I want to hear the discussion. I like Town Meeting. I like the government. This is, this is the pure form, John.
This certainly is, and...
Yeah. So, I'm totally opposed to doing that. I think that that's just kicking the can down the road. Let's, let's, adults, let's figure it out.
Okay. I had to double-check my Town Meeting time, because a, and it's a bit confusing, Mrs. Spofford moved to adjourn and dissolve the meeting. I took that as a meaning, meaning to adjourn the meeting, but the part of it being dissolved is not debatable. So, I guess I'd ask Ms. Spofford to readdress the meeting, as whether your motion was to adjourn to another time, that, like we did last time? Or to dissolve the meeting, and then we have to vote on it, because it is not debatable. A motion to dissolve is not debatable. If it passes, that means we all go home, and we punt, basically. But I'm not sure where we're punting. But anyway, Ms. Spofford? Right, right.
I'm making the motion to dissolve the meeting, so that the Select Board, the FINCOM, can get together, get the numbers together, and if we just put it off for another week, that's not going to happen. So, I would prefer to dissolve the meeting and have it come back, once the numbers are more set, and we know what's going on, especially in light of what happened with this ethics violation, how is that going to impact the town, the grants that we've received towards all the work done for the water department?
Ms. Spofford, I understand, I just wanted to know whether or not you want to dissolve the meeting.
Dissolve.
All right. And we have the written motion?
I need to sign. May I speak to the motion, Mr. Moderator?
No. It's not debatable.
Okay. Thank you.
We're just waiting for the written motion. I think there is precedent for voting on this while we wait for the written motion to appear. I'm not going to delay this any further. All those in favor of dissolving the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it. The meeting is not dissolved.
Do we have a count? Do we have a sound?
You can have a count if seven people rise to count the vote.
That's correct, people. That's correct, that's people.
Seven people can challenge my call that it was a no vote on the motion to dissolve. And it appears we have more than seven, so the counters, please come forward. That's, Mr. Rideout, you're still sworn in, if you, I saw you here someplace, Bill. And, let's see, how are we going to do this? You guys want to do the balcony? Yeah. And anybody who is voting in the meeting, please come into the hall, and if you could, take a seat, because we can't tell if you're voting, if you're standing up. So, please have a seat. So, we're counting now, on all those in favor of dissolving the meeting, please stand.
To dissolve the meeting.
To dissolve, it's going to be no vote.
I heard people are going to give a monitor to the personnel.
Seven.
I'm a no. Yes, I am. Yeah, let me know.
All right. All those in favor, I'm sorry, all those...
Mr. Moderator, I don't think we had a counter up here.
Yes, there was counters.
I don't think everybody was counting at the right time.
Brian Funioli and Rebecca Sturtevant.
Up here?
Were counting.
Up here?
Yeah. I don't think they counted up here, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, all right.
They did not come up here.
Hmm. Yeah, Mr. Funioli? Oh, all right. They came down and reported to count, so I don't know.
Counting out.
Oh, oh, okay. You guys want to count the balcony again? Those in favor of dissolving the meeting in the balcony, please stand. Sixteen? Okay. All those that want to vote no on the motion to dissolve, please stand. I don't vote unless it's a tie. All right. The vote is 52 aye, 81 no. The motion does not carry. Requires a majority vote. Okay. All right. Now, let's, we're going to get into the budget. We got one more question. I'm going to just take one motion. Ms. Schiffern. All right. We'll continue with the selectmen's presentation.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Craven?
Yes. So, you let someone talk before me, you said they were first, I'm still waiting. May I ask my question? So...
Go ahead.
Through you, through you to Town Council, you've stated that we are not allowed to know what the cuts are, but when we look at other towns, they clearly state what would be cut. Easton, Franklin, Belcher Town, Bridgewater, the list goes on and on and on. I could look at their websites, and they'll say, "We're cutting a detective, we're closing the pool, we're cutting a firefighter, we're cutting this or that administrative position." Everything is clearly spelled out. That is not so for us, and the budget that's being presented by the Board of Selectmen, when there's cuts, it is just at the bottom of their tally. It doesn't give a specific line item where the cuts are, and for that, it is very confusing as a voter, as to what we're paying. I feel like a child going into a store and paying a few dollars for a surprise box, which I don't care to do with my tax dollars. So, could you explain that to me? And the other voters?
Question comes on the budget.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So, just to be clear, I didn't say you're not allowed to know. I said that if I were you, I would want to know. However, the reality is that we can't commit, and by we, I mean the administration, the Select Board, can't commit to making cuts, when those cuts have not been negotiated with the individual bargaining units. The Select Board could lie to you. The Select Board could stand on stage, sit on stage, and could tell you the cuts are going to be made here, there, here, there, and then, in a month, or in six weeks, sit at the negotiating table with those bargaining units, and those bargaining units could choose not to negotiate those terms, and the consequence could be that the cuts can't be made as the Select Board had proposed, and as it committed to you they were going to be made, because that's just not how it played out. That's not, not how it worked when we got to the negotiating table. So, the cuts are proposed in segments, they're proposed in a more general sense, because the Select Board couldn't get any more specific without making commitments that they are not presently poised to make. I can't speak to the circumstances in other communities, I've seen it done this way in other communities. I can't speak to the communities that were specifically referenced, or the circumstances that were referenced, the fiscal years that were at issue, whether the positions that were cut were union positions or non-union positions, where they were with respect to the negotiating process with the individual unions. It's sort of like asking me to compare apples and oranges from the stage on the spot, off the cuff. I simply can't do that. But what I can tell you is, we were consulted, my firm was consulted, I'm not your labor counsel, I'm your general counsel, but your labor counsel was with my firm, labor counsel was consulted, my colleague, with respect to the extent to which the Board could make commitments at this stage in the process, knowing what it knows, and we advised that they provide as much specificity as they could, but that they not commit to making cuts, reductions, whether that be reductions in salary, reductions in positions, reductions in hours, when they didn't know the specifics of those cuts, those reductions, as of yet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Costa.
So, thank you. And so, to be clear, as follow-up to Attorney Costa, what you're saying, then, is if we proceed with the functional categorical line items, the Board of Selectmen has, for example, put in $138,000 cut to public safety, we would vote on that here, and once Town Meeting has closed, the Board of Selectmen could decide that that all goes to police, or it all goes to fire. It could be on equipment, it could be on personnel, because it's a functional category budget, not accounted for by department, so we wouldn't know. The department heads essentially wouldn't know. So, you're asking us to go blindly, without knowing what the cuts specifically are, and by asking us to do it by category, functional, rather than by department, we don't even know which of the departments would be...
know which of the departments would be receiving funding. I'll sit down, I think we need to go back to what the moderator asked us, and Mr. Moderator, would you like a motion from somebody on whether we go with a functional or a department budget?
Uh, I, I think I have tried to moderate as much as I can. I think that the select board can finish its presentation, and then, if there is a motion on those points, the meeting can, can decide it. Uh, ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to wait just a minute and let the Board of Selectmen finish their comments about the budget. I think at least you ought to give them a chance to explain what they're proposing here.
I'm okay with them speaking. They stood up-
All right, you want to defer?
I defer to them.
Okay, all right. Ma'am?
Randy Rush, sixty Turner Road. I just have a question as far as the process for moving money from department to department. I know, I'm on the school committee, we go by Mass. General Law, the school committee has to vote any money that goes between departments regardless of how we voted that money in the budget. Matter of fact, the school committee votes a bottom-line number to our entire budget, but there's a transfer process for any money going from department to department. Can you tell me what the process is for the Board of Selectmen in the middle of the year if some money needs to be moved for unexpected circumstances to go from a department to a department, even within a functional segment?
Question comes on the budget, and Mr. Mui?
Thank you, town, town moderator. During the year, if there's a need for transfers, there's a couple ways to do it. One way is to make a request to the Finance Committee, they have a reserve fund, so if something unforeseen came up during the fiscal year that was not planned for, you can always make a request with the Finance Committee, and they do have a reserve fund that you, you can put in your request, and it would be up to the Finance Committee to make that determination if they would grant that request or not. Now, there is something also called a municipal reserve fund transfer, and that happens in the last two months of the fiscal year, so May and June, as well as the first fifteen days of the next fiscal year. Same reasoning, expenses that came up that were unforeseen, so you were now over budget, the departments would make a request, and the Select Board and the Finance Committee both need to review and approve that request. And then there's also various town meetings, you know, you, something unexpected comes up, you can always get an article to, we plan to start with funds through, you know, free cash or any other means necessary, so those are typically the methods that departments have to make transfers throughout the year.
Comments come on the question?
Come on, John, you've known me for twenty-plus years. Emmy Hoff and I'm at North End Road, and I'm actually, am I allowed to revisit the union conversation, or is that finished? We were discussing that, about the cuts being, you know, bargaining table, blah, 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 that part? Am I allowed to?
Well, you know, I, I think we have to limit ourselves to some degree here, if you have a pointed question-
I do have-
But we can't have a ongoing discussion about entire, entirety of municipal finance-
I absolutely agree.
Because we will be here till December.
I absolutely agree, and I'm not, I don't typically stand at the meetings and address, but, but-
Go ahead.
So, let's use the twenty-seven thousand dollars that we're looking at in cuts in the budget that just says generally-
Yeah.
Let's talk about the twenty-seven thousand that we were just talking about that just generally says salaries and reductions, and that, and because of the bargaining table, we're just gonna make it generic for the public. As the Chair for the Supervisors Union, Local seventeen oh three, I'm saying, we have been available to go to the bargaining table beforehand, so that we were all in good faith, instead of going to the bargaining table after, when they can come and sit down and say, "Well, the town said, we're cutting twenty-seven thousand dollars." So, in my thought process, and I'm not saying one way or the other, everybody has their opinions, thoughts, and choices, but I will state that the unions were available, the unions have reached out, and that having a generic cut across either a function or a department, that you then bring to a bargaining table, you have already effectively cut the ability of the other party to bargain. Thank you.
Okay, comments come on the budget, and Ms. Schiffern?
Point of clarification, Mr. Moderator?
I'm gonna listen to the, the selectmen's budget-
We can't hear, we cannot hear, Mr. Moderator. We cannot hear.
All right, then, why don't you folks come down into the main hall? Because-
Not much better down here.
You can't hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, that's, all right, everybody's, we'll have to make sure that people speak directly into the mic. If you don't hear the person speaking, raise the point of privilege then, please. All right. Ms. Schiffern?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to thank all of you for coming, as did the previous speakers. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I want to thank you all for coming, in particular, I want to thank all of our employees and all the staff that helped to run our town. If we could have given you the override in March, we wouldn't be sitting here today, and I certainly approve of it. I want to also thank all of the elected and appointed positions, those people who work for the benefit of the community and are not paid. I hope that we can all reach an agreement tonight and that we end up with a budget. Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Let's stick to the budget, please.
Mr. Mui?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say a few words before we begin reviewing the FY twenty-six omnibus budget. The budget that you see before you is a balanced budget that has incorporated department-head feedback and input that has resulted in substantial cuts in expenses. All these cuts and expenses were done with input and feedback from all department heads. They have cut as much as they possibly can cut without negatively impacting their ability to run their department. But unfortunately, this budget does include reductions in employee salaries and wages as well. The override warrant article in the special town meeting that you will be voting on later will address those proposed reductions. In addition, I wanted to provide some clarification on two ARPA-related funding sources. The first being, um, the proposed reallocation of ARPA funds for the human resources manager position. This position was voted to be fully funded in FY twenty-six by the Select Board in December of twenty twenty-four, and any potential reallocation can only be done by the Select Board. Reporting to the Treasury Department reflected these votes that were taken by the Select Board. Number two is the hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds that was originally allocated to the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust. The town's auditors and accounting department has determined that these funds cannot be reallocated to pay for any other operating expenses, including salaries and wages. Townsend received some findings on how the Affordable Housing Trust funds were handled, and our accountant, town accountant believes it would be prudent to avoid any additional findings on how we handle federal funds. Findings of this nature can negatively impact future bond ratings, which could negatively impact our borrowing rates and future grant applications. We will certainly continue to seek guidance and potentially find a path forward to utilize these funds, but at the current time, we have been advised that this is not possible. So in conclusion, these two ARPA funding sources are not a component of the Select Board's FY twenty-six budget, and any budget that is using either these sources as revenue should be removed from that budget, which may ultimately result in a unbalanced budget. So those were the, sort of the key points I wanted to make before we started reviewing the budget tonight. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion on the budget. Ms. King?
Hi, can, can you hear me? Just working?
Can you hear her?
Okay. Um, I, I have a concern that, I'm not quite sure that the Select Board knows how to transfer funds in the middle of the year, as Attorney Costa explained. Attorney Costa had explained that they, the voting on a functional segment allows the Select Board to move monies in between departments within each functional segment without any additional town meeting vote. When Kim Craven asked the Select Board to explain how they were gonna do that, Nelson Mui took the, the mic and said, "There's three ways, reserve fund transfer, which is a fund all in its own, used for emergency-"
Point of order?
What's your point of order?
We are now straying into topics that have nothing to do with the consideration of this warrant article. You have cleared the floor for a vote on how we will go, either line by line, or the department approach, I'm not sure, but I believe it's time to begin the consideration of the budget.
Is, is now. I, I think that's a point well-taken. Ms. King, I think there's, you know, we can talk about philosophy and what the Select Board knows or doesn't know all night. I think we've got to get down, drill down to some numbers, and I'm still waiting for a motion as to what process we're gonna follow, whether it's a departmental vote, or if it's on a functional segment vote.
I think we can vote when we get the numbers.
Ms. Craven?
So you're looking for a motion. I move that we be presented with a department-by-department budget in order to vote.
Second?
All right, motion's been made to proceed under a department-by-department vote. You got that in writing, Ms. Craven? Uh, this is a procedural vote, it's a majority vote, uh, to direct what, what process we're gonna follow here at the town meeting. What it means is, we don't have to necessarily do every line item, but we are going to vote on each department's allocation in the budget. And it is debatable, but I suggest that we don't debate it, just let's decide. And once I see it's written, I'll ask for the vote. There's a second, right? I heard somebody seconded it. Yep. That's gonna, I was gonna, it's, it is debatable, but I'm gonna encourage you not to, because we need to decide this, we gotta move on. Okay. All right, the mo, motion is to have the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen present a department-by-department budget. I, I take that as meaning that's how we're going to vote on the budget, and it's on the selectmen's budget. All right, all those in favor of department, departmental budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Well, I think we have to have the counters up. All those in favor of voting, yeah, guys upstairs, and all those in favor of a departmental budget, examination of the budget, please stand. Yep, sure, it'll take a while. Okay, everyone, sit down that has voted, all those in, in opposition to a departmental budget, that means we would be voting on a functional segment budget, please stand. Okay, the vote is eighty-three aye, fifty-three no, the motion passes. So, I think that brings us to the, the budget, starting with Board of Selectmen. Is there anything to be said? And I think we've agitated over this quite a bit, so if there- And I think we've agitated over this quite a bit, so if there, I'm going to move fairly quickly on this, because otherwise, we won't be done until 1 o'clock. All right. No questions on the Selectmen's budget? Then we're going to move to Finance Committee. Any questions?
I have a question on the Selectmen's budget.
All right, Ms. Craven?
So, it stated that the Selectmen are the ones that hold...
Be given to the mic, we can't hear you.
Can you hear now?
Yep.
It was stated that the Selectmen have the sole vote over how the ARPA funds can be utilized. And the National League of Cities, on March 20th, affirmed that the ARPA funds could be used for any position in place before December 30th, 2024. On March 24th, in a phone conversation, Jennifer Thompson, who is the consultant for us, also stated that the funds could be used for any position. What you don't see on this budget before you is the funds for the ARPA-funded position, which while it was voted in at a Board of Selectmen meeting, again, the Board of Selectmen decided that they would be the ones to hold the purse strings to that $2.8 or so million. It was also stated that if there was not budget for the position, the position would be dissolved. This has nothing to do with the person holding the position, this has to do with the finances of our town. There is some $106,000 in the ARPA funds that our town people are not seeing on this budget. Moreover, there's the opportunity to switch that budget. In order to do so, I would have to make a motion to reduce the Select Board's budget by $106,000. Thereby, the Board of Selectmen could then move your ARPA funds, which you have said you are the sole holder of that funds. I've also looked at the compliance report for the ARPA funds, but unfortunately, are not posted on our town's website, but have to go through a Freedom of Information Act. And there is $100,000 listed in salary on the last one that was submitted. I would guess that somehow, that is going to go to salary, I would like that explained. While it's not on the omnibus budget, it has relevance, because this Board of Selectmen is asking us to vote for an override, but there's $106,000 that's available for salary if the position that we were told, if we were in a budget crisis, would be eliminated. There's also a report that has $100,000 listed as salaries. So, could you please explain why you are not willing to hold true to that vote that said repeatedly the position would be eliminated? Secondly, why does that ARPA report have the $100,000 listed as salary? Further, could you explain why the Board of Selectmen that took that stance, that you would be responsible, and if I'm not mistaken, our Board of Selectmen member, Ms. Cal, is also on the housing, that had the $100,000?
Ms. Craven?
And why that is an account, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Moderator, it's relevant to our budget, it's $100,000...
You've made that point.
...that's lost. I want to know why it wasn't accounted for, why they won't switch the funding, and why our community is not seeing that. I also want an affirmative answer that I've asked, is the benefit package for that employee still in the tax levy? Because on the paperwork from the town accountant, it shows $54,000 in benefits hitting the tax levy from a position that was put in from ARPA. It's on the accounting paperwork.
Comments come on the motion. Is there anything, any response?
Kim, as I mentioned earlier, the auditors and the town accountant's office have stated that the $100,000 from ARPA, you know, we can't use it towards the operating budget...
Through the moderator to the town administrator.
Let Mr. Moy finish speaking.
Point of clarification...
You're out of order, Ms. Craven.
It's a point of clarification, which is not out of order. The auditor...
You are out of order until you're recognized, ma'am.
Point of clarification, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Craven, step down.
It's a point of clarification.
Constable?
John.
Listen, we are going to let people have their chance to speak. If you're not going to, you're going to stifle people from speaking, except the people that grab the microphone, we are not going to get done. I control this meeting, and Mr. Moy had the floor. When somebody else wants to speak, they have to be recognized first. Mr. Moy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kim, as I mentioned before, the town auditors and the town accountant's office has stated that that money cannot be used towards the operating budget and/or salaries and wages. They, as I mentioned before, you know, we already have findings on how we handle the federal funds, you know, for ARPA. If we incur any more potential findings on how we handle federal funds, that could seriously negatively impact our bond ratings, which would negatively impact our borrowing rates for the future. So, you know, I am looking for ways to utilize that money in any way possible, but at the moment, the answer is, that's not possible. Now, that's not to say, you know, in the coming weeks and months, if we receive more guidance, either from the federal government or other municipalities, or maybe even, you know, we have additional conversations with auditors and the town accountant's office, but as of right now, the guidance is, we cannot use that money. And that is the guidance I intend to follow.
Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
Katie Kazanjin, 329 Townsend Hill Road, assistant town accountant.
Yep.
I just would like to clarify that the accountant's office and the auditors did not tell them they couldn't use it, they were telling them that the money was not obligated. And to check with the Treasury, the federal Treasury, for more guidance. We cannot provide guidance as the auditors or the accountant's office.
Okay, comments come on the motion. Mr. Rahala?
We have still not gotten consideration of the budget. But we are here discussing funding options or money available, the outcome of the four votes in the fight need to be determined, and the source of the funds, the law of this will follow the procedures that exist at that time. Just the search that we begin the consideration of how we be...
Maintain the decorum of the floor, the points well taken. However, I'm going to look for a motion to limit debate, to a motion to either change the budget that we are considering, and voting on that change or not, because we can't have an answer and question session about every item of municipal finance concerning this town. We simply, this is not the forum for doing this. We have the budget before us. If you want to make a motion to change that budget, fine, I'll allow a brief comment about why you want to change it, and response from the Select Board and the Finance Committee. But other than that, we've got to move on. Miss, ma'am? I can't see who you are with the glare of the light, so...
Becky Zagami, 6 Edward Road. I move to reduce the BOS budget by $106,000.
By how much?
$106,000.
All right. We're going to vote on these, because I don't think we can go with written motions for everything in the budget. So, this is within the budget, we're not, we'll vote on the final number when it comes up. Counsel, is there any problem with that?
No.
Oh, do we have a second? All right, there's no second, so...
Mr. Moderator.
All right. Motion been made in second to reduce the Select Board's budget by $106,000. Anything to be said to the Selectmen or FinCom? All right, all those in favor of reducing the budget? Mr. Chief Shepherd?
Gary Shepherd, Meeting House Road. I believe the 106 is for the reduction of HR. And from my perspective, HR is a position that we've needed and we've used, and in the past few years, we haven't had the lawsuits, we haven't had the claims, and from my department, where we have 50 people, it makes a great deal of difference with FMLA and a variety of other things. We've always, we have, I have been told as a department head, that money had to be utilized or encumbered before December of 2024. I believe it was. I know that there's folks that say you can change it, I do not believe that. I support maintaining and keeping the HR position with ARPA, even if it's only for a year, and try to minimize the lawsuits and challenges that we had in the past. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion? All right, I think, I'm going to have limit debate. You got one minute.
Becky Zagami, 6 Edward Road. It's my understanding that the town administrator is doing HR work, so if we need money to get by this budget, then why are we funding a position that we shouldn't be funding?
All right, comments come on the motion. Mr. Shaka?
It's more of a point of order, does the, I don't know who made the motion to reduce the budget, does she have to specify where the money is coming from?
It's just, just on the department, doesn't, you know, it's, it'll be up to the Select Board, where, if that budget is cut, how they address that.
Can I be recognized?
Well, I'm sorry, before, that's, ma'am up in the balcony there, before you stepped up.
Hi, thank you, Sarah Logan, 94 North End Road. On the HR person, I don't disagree with wanting to reduce that role, but I don't think it's part of this particular department, so I'm not sure it's relevant to voting on this. And then my other question is, is just with regards to salary increases for employees, are they same across the board, and what would that number be? Because if we're in a, if we're in a money crunch, I don't think any one employee should be getting a significant increase in their pay versus anyone else.
All right, comments come on the budget? Any comment, Mr. Moy?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, Mr. Moy?
Most of the union contracts do have stipulated step raises and cost of living adjustments, and typically, the step raises are 2% every year, and the cost of living adjustment is 2%, so essentially a 4% increase.
So, anybody that's getting more than 4% when we go through this budget, is that something we can...
Ma'am, we can't, all of us can't hear you unless you use the mic. And we can't have a give and take, you know, Mr. Moy makes a comment, then we have to go to the next person. Are you done, Mr. Moy?
I believe so, yes.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. Finance, do you have anything?
I can do it. So, we're supposed to be voting for the top of the department.
Right.
So, we're not going to know what job or loss or name back to the HR position.
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Churchill, I couldn't understand your question.
So, we're told that we're voting for the department's bottom line, and we're not being told what job we need to have or say, or where, so is the HR position for our...
If the, the bottom line in the department is cut, then it'll be up to that department to decide how to deal with it. We're not, we're not telling the Select Board how they're going to deal with these cuts if they're made.
That would come in the end.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Cal?
All right, I just want to know that...
Lord, I'll get to you in a minute. Go ahead.
Personnel in the Board of Selectmen budget is 187,000. That includes the town administrator and the assistant to the town administrator. So there are two positions that make up 187,000, and you can see that in your budget book that you have in front of you. Expenses are 24,000. The HR position is not part of this, because it is ARPA funds, it is not tax dollars, and it is separate from. That position will sunset at the end of this fiscal year. Mr. Moy did speak with the school department, because it was suggested that the town could share with the school department HR. They have two HR departments. HR for a school district is completely different from HR for a town, for a municipality, and they would need to hire someone else if they were going to cover the municipality. I have been very grateful that we have had HR for the past two, now entering the third year. It has, when I was a Selectman in my first round, I walked into lots of lawsuits, lots of grievances, onboarding processes that were not consistent, FMLA processes that were not consistent. This has brought a lot of consistency to the town, and has, has kept us out of other financial jeopardy that we could have. A reduction of $106,000 to our budget means that we will either not have a town administrator or a part-time town administrator. There is nowhere else to go. It won't be from the HR department, because if you look at this, HR is zero-funded in this budget. So just know that. And we did vote in December, when we were required by the Treasury to obligate all of our funds, and that those funds were obligated at that point. So I am just advocating to keep our budget for the Select Board as is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Comments come on the motion. Ms. Lord?
Hi, Sandra Lord. I'm a little confused about this whole HR thing, but someone, it was suggested to me that the HR is in, within the town administrator's purview, I guess, or scope. Can you, could someone address that, please? That's, that's what I had just heard, so I'm a little confused. If it's within the town administrator's job description, do we need HR separately? I don't know.
All right, question comes on the motion to reduce the budget. Is there anything to be said?
So, I believe there are some HR functions in my job description, but to wholesale get rid of HR and put it on the town administrator, I'm not saying I can't handle it, it's not what I do, I don't have experience in doing that, and all it takes is one innocent mistake, you know, dealing with HR, and you can either run into a lawsuit, or a grievance, or any number of issues that, you know, HR is frankly not my forte and my strong suit, and that's not what I was frankly hired to do. I'm not saying I can't do it, I would certainly try my best, but that's not to say that I make one innocent mistake and, you know, now we're, you know, looking at some sort of grievance or lawsuit that's going to cost us substantially more compared to just, you know, having an HR person full-time and, you know, dealing with HR functions, you know, as their, you know, primary responsibility. I mean, given the size of our town and the amount of employees that we have, you know, it makes the most sense for us to have a dedicated HR manager in place.
Okay, comments come on the motion. Mr. Rideout? Move the question? Okay, motion made to move the question that will cut off debate on the motion to amend reducing the Selectmen's budget by 106,000. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It is before you, a motion to amend the budget for the Selectmen by reducing it by 106,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
The noes have it. Anything, all right, I think that should conclude debate on the Selectmen's budget. Is there any question about Finance Committee? The total, all right, why don't we read, I'll read the total for the Selectmen, and let's have a vote on that. All those in favor of the Select Board's total?
Yes.
All right. It's hard to talk with this thing in your face. All right, let's vote on the, the selectmen total is 212,171. And that's just the vote, that was the vote on the, the motion. 212,171. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Finance committee. I think there's nothing to be said. All those in favor of the budgeted amount for finance, which is 40,750, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Accounting. The total on accounting is eight, 87,000?
155,534.
Oh, I'm sorry. Total is 155,534. Anything to be said? Here's we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the accounting budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Board of assessors. Total is 118, wait a minute, sorry, we gotta go down. The board of assessors total is 134,367. Anything to be said? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Treasurer collector. Total for the treasurer collector is 268,395. Anything to be said? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, legal. Legal total is 82,500. Anything to be said? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, the ayes have it. Management information. Total is on line three, 116. Total is 188,375. Anything to be said?
188,375.
I, I, I see 188,375.
Right.
Okay, all right. Ms. Craven?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the board of selectmen. I believe this is the line item that includes Guardian, and it was brought up earlier this year, that Guardian is on a three-year contract self, self-extending, where in your policy it says you can't have a self-extending contract. My question to this is, have you gone back to Guardian? If this is the correct line item that it's in, that it's not a self-extending contract, and you, have you renegotiated that?
Question comes on the management information budget.
Guardian has provided a pricing proposal, and they, the proposal was level funding. They didn't include any increases.
So they did not propose any increases, but you did not ask for any decreases? Because it's a little hard to hear you, Nelson, sorry.
No, I didn't explicitly ask for a decrease.
Okay. And to be clear, have you signed that contract yet?
We have, I have not, no.
Okay.
And I would propose, then, that we take a reduction of 10% off of this line item.
All right. There's a motion to reduce management information total by 10%. My math skills are not that good. I'm guessing that's around $18,000. Someone wants to do the math. Is there a second on that motion? I'm sorry, I didn't hear a second. Okay.
And, and you're allowing us to state why? I, I believe you said that we could state why we're making that motion. My, my motion is being made because I believe that we are cutting things like our band concerts, and if we're asking our own folks to cut, I would like to be asking our contractors to cut as well.
Can you deliver a motion, Ms. Craven, on that? And I'm sorry, Dr. Roman Rivera, you had a question?
Mr. Moderator, on line 115, on the articles, there's a different number. On the, on the budget that is on the articles, it says 198,375. And on the presentation that the select board has, it says 188,000 and something. So we want to have clarification, which number is the real number? Because on the warrant articles that are printed on here, which I'm reading, it says And on the, on the select board's presentation, it shows 188,000 and something. I don't, I, I just saw it from, from the number, so we just need clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay, I, I think in the original warrant, it does have a different number, but I think we're going with the, the handout for the omnibus budget. This document here that was in the handouts, that's, that's the budget that we're reviewing. All right, if everybody, everybody has that now? And that does show the 188,375.
That is the total. That 188 is the total. The Guardian contract, I believe, is covered under line 109. The professional and purchase services.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cal, I'm, I'm, what, what do you?
Are we cutting the total management information budget by 10%?
Yes.
Or are we covering, are we cutting Guardian by 10%?
I, I, I don't, I know Guardian had something to do with it, but I think you're cutting, the motion was to cut that budget entirely, I mean, by 10%.
All right, the motion is to cut 18,000, not 10% from the management information budget.
All right, I think it speaks for itself. Think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend the management information budget by cutting it by 18,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it. Again, just to follow the process here, we've had a motion to amend, now we're gonna vote on that budget department number. It is 188,375. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Town clerk. Town clerk total is 127,052. Anything to be said? Here's we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Elections. Elections total is 12,075. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Registars. Registars total is 2,442. I don't think there's anything to be said. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Street listings. Total for street listings is 5,200. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Total on conservation is 49,053. Anything to be said? All right, ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. MRPC dues and membership. Total is 3,475. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Planning board. Planning board total is, what was in my eyesight here? 33,135. Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Zoning board total, 6,337. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Land use. Total land use is line 223, and it is 37,984. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Facilities. Facilities total is 318,711. Right? Yeah. It's 318,711. Anything to be said? Ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Total, police total is 1,945,347. Anything to be said? Here's we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Fire EMS. Total on fire EMS is 1,783,310. Anything to be said? Ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Emergency management. Emergency management total is 4,103. We're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Communications total is 369,993. Anything to be said? Here's we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Building department. Building department total is 133,939. Anything to be said? Here's we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Gas inspector. Total is 7,129. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Plumbing inspector. Total is 11,834. We're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Sealer of weights and measures. Total is, oh, we got a good cut there, 215. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, the ayes have it. Electrical inspector. Proposed is 2,636. Nope, nope, sorry. Yeah, missed a line. Anything to be said? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Animal inspector. Total is 1,200. Anything to be said? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Well, at least all ayes. Animal control. Total is 24,978. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Tree warden. Tree warden total is 22,337. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Burial agent. Total is 151. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Parking clerk. Total is on line 498, I think. No, 500, I'm sorry, 500. Oh, 498, yeah, 498 is 70. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we made any reductions. Is that right, Mr. Mayor? Right, no votes have changed, so the, the total on public safety is 4,186,36. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it.
Mr. Moderator? To your right, point of order?
Point of, oh, Mr. Casa.
I believe we skipped over the general government segment as a function.
Oh, as a total line.
I, I presume that you might vote them all at the end, but it does make sense to vote them as we go.
Right, right.
We should go back.
I meant, I meant to do that. So going back to general government, if you indulge me, we did have a total, we didn't have any, I don't believe we had any changes there either. So the total, general government is line 254, and is a total of 1,649,936.
No, Mr. Moderator, may I just correct? I, I caught this in your last quote as well. You quoted the, then, the number with override, and that's not what we voted on. The votes were taken on all the totals that total the column on the functional segments that say with override. So the general government would be 1,677,544?
No, no, we're, we're voting with the reductions.
That's not, that's not like, close. No reductions have been made.
The general government total.
The department by department added up to 1,677,555?
Yeah, that, that is if the override passes.
But if we're voting by departments, then those are the budgets.
Have a moment, please?
Sure.
All right, so we're voting this number based on the override? All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to the selectmen again to explain this because my understanding was that we were voting fiscal year '26 with reductions. Those are the numbers that I've been reading. Those are the numbers that I've been reading off and...
Correct. The to... the columns are exactly the same because we didn't vote the reduction on line 253 of $27,619 to make the total of $1,649,936.
Okay, okay, I get ya. So, the numbers leading up to the line 254 are identical.
Correct.
Except, we did not vote on the $27,619 reduction.
Correct.
So, if we do vote... If we do not vote that reduction, we will be...
We won't have a balanced budget.
Approving a budget of $1,677,555.
Which needs the override.
Which will need an override.
Right.
So, is there a...
Are we voting the override now?
Alright, so we need to vote on the reduction, I guess, what it comes down to.
Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
Here to your right again.
Yeah.
Just another point of order and clarification for the voters. So, remember, we have still opened the special town meeting warrant to which we will be returning.
Right.
And the remaining article on the special town meeting warrant is to appropriate the funds that would be generated by an override. Essentially, to take these numbers, the first of which is on line 252... Excuse me, 253, the reduction of $27,619 from the general government segment. That appropriation in the special town meeting warrant article would restore that sum. So, just so the public is clear, that we do have a separate warrant article that will appropriate the additional monies that are required by the override.
So, effectively, we're approving both numbers except that one is subject to an override vote.
But ideally, we wouldn't have to come back to this budget. So, there are multiple different ways to propose an override, but the most practical and efficient way is to adopt a budget that doesn't require the override, so at least you have a budget moving forward. And then separately, as an entirely independent warrant article, appropriate the additional sum that will be contingent upon the override vote. So, if in a few weeks, the override vote doesn't pass at the ballot box, you at least have a valid adopted budget.
Okay. So, I guess the question is, is there a motion to reduce the general government total by $27,619?
Point of order. Sorry, please.
Yeah.
So, when we... we have already voted for these totals, are we now going back and revoting them again?
Good question. I'm not sure because we just voted all the totals in the departments and there were no motions to reduce them. So, I quite frankly had a loss as to how we've now voted to reduce it by $27,000.
Because, Mr. Moderator, it's a separate line item within the budget. So, I think the same way that you're walking through the various line items, land use, facilities, police, et cetera, when you get to the end of a functional segment, you're asking for a vote on that reduction. If the vote fails, then that budget's not reduced. But there's insufficient funds to fund the budget and then you're effectively making your baseline budget subject to the override, the same way that the supplemental appropriation in the special town meeting will require the override.
So, point of clarification.
Okay. Yep.
So, on the very last page, Mr. Moderator, there's a sum of $27,592,926. The average person would assume, because you were telling us that it was the right-hand column, that what we were voting on in the right-hand column equaled that amount. If that's not, in fact, what we were voting on, I'm asking you for this point of clarity and order. We would have to move to undo all of our previous votes and have... And I'm relying on Katie for that. So, somehow, we actually have to know what is the real number because we are voting at this juncture for the right-hand column that equals the $27 million... Gotta put my glasses back on. If those numbers in the right-hand column don't equal that, I was under the assumption that those negative numbers were factored in to the equation going down to the bottom line.
May I, Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Goodrich.
Those numbers... Can everybody hear me? Those numbers are subtracted as we go down the budget. So, that last number, 27,597... Sorry, 927. Reflects those reductions in each segment, in the very right-hand column. Am I correct, Nelson?
No. We did not vote on the reductions in general government or public safety.
Yes, so we need to vote on the reductions in the segment.
Can that be identified where the reductions would come from? Because we would need to input that into the budget.
I think that's the point of confusion. As we voted on each department, it seems like the numbers were exactly the same.
Correct.
Whether it's with override or with reductions. And then, we're voting to reduce general government by $27,619. But we didn't reduce any of those... I mean, that's basically putting in effect the functional segment approach again.
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Mr. Casas.
So, in some respects, you're correct and this is sort of circling back to the argument we had or the discussion that we had a bit earlier about the means of or the mechanism used to make cuts to union positions when those cuts have not yet been negotiated with the unions. And so, as I understand it, and again, I was not intimately a part of the budget process, so the select board can correct me if I'm mistaken, but what I understand the select board has done is, within each of these functional segments, after working through the various departments, they have proposed a reduction number that would be implemented within that functional segment through cuts, whether that be reduction of hours, whether that be reduction of staff, changes with respect to the extent of hours worked by staff within the individual functional segments. That amounts to the subtractions that are made at the end of each of the functional segments.
Okay. And since we're voting on it by departments, it will be... These... this $27,000 will be taken out of general government.
One of those departments or a series of those departments within that functional segment. That's correct. That's the only component of the budget that is not specific to departments, correct?
Mr. Moderator. As the accountant's office, we would not be able to upload a budget that had a reduction in a fictitious line. It would have to be per line for each expense.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Goodrich.
The way I understand that is that that would be reflected once negotiations are done. So, while we may have a proposal for how those reductions are made, the unions may come back with a different proposal for the same amount of money. So, those would be reflected once the union negotiations are done with the TA. Am I correct?
Ms. Lloyd.
So... I'm not...
Point of order.
Well, I'm a little confused here because I just don't see transparency here. I just don't. I think a lot of people are in the same boat. They don't see the transparency where the cuts are gonna be, I mean, when to wait. Okay. I think a lot of people probably feel the same way I do, a little... some confusion about these cuts. We're not seeing where the cuts are. I'm not... You know, we need to see the cuts now, not like, we're voting on it now. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Craven.
It is my understanding that the motion for an override is in the special town meeting, which we put on hold till we finish this meeting. Wrong term.
Right.
But, and I did point this out to the BOS in one of the meetings, town meeting is supposed to be presented a balanced budget, which I understood was the one in the right-hand column. We are to do a balanced budget, then we can vote on a contingency budget. We can't do both at the same time. We are... Town meeting is supposed to be given a balanced budget. One. Then, we can vote on a contingency budget. Second... That's a separate vote and then the override would go back to special town meeting. So, we would have the budget to go forward. The contingency budget is just that, contingent if the override article in the special town meeting is voted in the affirmative. And then, if at the ballot box, it's voted in the affirmative. We can't commingle the votes. They have to be two separate. And so, I was under the belief we were voting on the balanced budget, the 27... Katie left me. Five something, I think it is. So, if we're voting on that, that's our balanced budget. Then, we have to vote on the contingency budget. Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
Like, we have to know which is which.
Okay, good. Comments come on the budget. Ms. Goodrich.
Mr. Moderator. With those reductions in the functional segments, this is a balanced budget. Sorry, can you hear me? With the reductions listed by functional segments, if we vote on those, this is a balanced budget without an override.
So, what we... We voted the totals, we voted the totals which would actually equal $1,677,555 unless we also vote $27,619 in reduction. And that would give us what would be a balanced budget without the override.
Again, but where are the reductions coming from?
That, I don't believe we know.
That it can't just be entered into the accounting software or into any filing of reports without knowing which department, at least.
Chief Shepherd.
Don't go away, Katie. Mr. Moderator, I don't know if this question is appropriate or not. It's out of my pay grade. It appears that we're voting conflicting segments on whether it's with or without an override. Would it be appropriate, Mr. Moderator and counsel? This is a stretch, folks, and I'm okay with a no. If we were to vote a total 26 without an override at $27,592 and then have the debate whether or not to move forward with the override and if the override passes, that would allow for this meeting to agree that the 26 budget would be reflected with the override of $27,851,755. From where I sit and what I hear, we're bouncing around a little bit whether the 27 is in or the 27 is out. And I know there's different schools of thought whether or not the alternate budget should be accepted or the selectmen. We made that decision a week ago that we're using the selectmen's budget. So, if we're gonna continue to go through each line item or each department, then we're gonna have to go back and do what we're doing now. So, if I may, and if it's appropriate without beleagering or delaying the meeting, I would move that we vote for the 26 override without... Excuse me, the 26 budget of $27,592,926 without the override. And then, we take the override question and then we can all go home at a reasonable time.
May I make a friendly amendment?
Kim would like to make a friendly amendment. Make a note. Go ahead.
Can you read the...
A friendly amendment, okay.
Oh, which one?
Your... whatever you just said. Those numbers you just said, minus $18,000.
Alright, so I would say we would... I would make a motion, Mr. Moderator, to approve the 26... Fiscal year '26 budget without the override. Do the calculations, Kim. Kim, do the calculations. To $27,574,926. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, alright. Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Peduzzi, could you get the microphone, please? I noticed that that number doesn't... is not consistent with the number I have in the omnibus budget, but...
Jeff Peduzzi to Scott Road. I understand all we missed was one $27,000 line item. We were going along very smoothly here. Department by department, the accountant or auditor, forgive me if I didn't get the word right, had a very valid point. And I think the question was simply, where can she assign that $27,000? We get past that, we can continue with department by department, approve or disapprove this budget and then go back if somebody said needs to and approve the proposed with override. That's how this is set up. We voted for department by department. If it has to be the two different budgets, that's how it has to be. We can't just jump to the end.
Well, that's the motion. The motion is to jump to the end. And I recognize that the difference is, is that it accounts for the $18,000 reduction in, I think...
May I spoke... May I speak to the...
Management information?
May I speak to Mr. Shepherd's motion? I don't know where he went.
Yeah, there was a second?
I was the second.
Alright, Ms. Craven.
So, I was the second on Ms. Spofford's to dissolve the meeting and I've gotten some texts that that's disruptive. The reason why I supported Kathy's motion is for this reason, that the numbers are confusing. And they are confusing. Katie needs the correct numbers to put in the system. That can't be put in this way. But I would support the chief's motion or Mr. Shepherd's. I don't know whether he was chief or citizen. But either way, our employees, if we're not gonna dissolve and go to a 1/12th, our employees need to know what's happening. Betty May needs to know what's happening on July 1st.
Okay.
I don't love our budget. Everybody knows that I do not love this process. I don't love the lack of transparency. We need our police, our fire. We need everybody that comes to work. Something has to be resolved. I believe it was right to dissolve and send it back to FinCom. We're not doing that. I'd rather support Gary's motion that we take the bottom line, minus the 18 unless someone else wants to make a motion to take out another number so that our government can move forward. But I gotta tell you, we gotta get this fixed. This has to be fixed.
Okay.
That's quantification. Now, we gotta vote.
Well, taken. Ms. Luzio.
Mr. Moderator, through you, may I ask a question to the accountant?
On the budget?
On the budget, yes.
Yeah.
If the problem is that we don't have a line to put the reductions into, can an accountant not create a line in the accounts, in the general accounts, to account for the reductions? So that if we vote on each one of the minuses, they total up to the amount that's going to be minus to balance the budget? I mean, I know the accountant can create accounts because they do that all the time. It's just a suggestion.
Ms. Kazadian is here. Maybe she can...
So, I'm the assistant. So, we do have a consultant that is the town accountant, but she's not here tonight. Per my knowledge, I can create new accounts, but this would be a negative expense account that would... It just would not make sense. No. No.
Alright.
I would like... But I do wanna comment on Kim's motion. I think it was yours, I don't know. I'm sorry.
We need that motion in writing too. Someone's putting that together, chief?
I don't know. Okay. So, I just wanna make clear that if we vote for either one of these budgets, if we vote for the one without the override, it does not allow me a place to account for the reductions. So, when I do my monthly report and my BVA that the selectmen get monthly, it won't have the correct number that was voted on.
Okay, comments come on the motion.
And again, I can't put in a negative line of accumulated deductions. That's...
Okay. Mr. Mui?
Mr. Moderator. So, if we voted on the $27,000... Was it 574,926 or some similar... So if we voted on the 27 million, was it 574,926, or some similar amount, the reductions that we are proposing, we would then go to the bargaining table to negotiate if those changes can happen. And whatever changes we agree on, then we will finalize those line items that are affected. And at that point, we will have, you know, solid numbers for each line. But we won't be able to do that until we go to the collective bargaining table and we all agree on where the changes are coming from. But once we are in agreement, then we can finalize all the various line items that you see before you in the omnibus budget. So at the moment, yes, you can't account for those reductions in the accounting software. But once we go to the collective bargaining table with the various unions and make the various impact bargain those changes, we will now come to an agreement on what those numbers will be, and then we can enter that into the accounting software.
Okay. Comments come on the motion. The motion is to skip the examination of line by line and simply adopt the total in the column for fiscal year '26 with reductions of 27,574,926. If the meeting does vote in favor of this, I think that will end the annual town meeting and we would go then to the, well, we would adjourn the annual town meeting and then go to the special town meeting to consider the override question from the special town meeting. What I would like to do, though, is to say if, ask if there is any other changes in the entire budget that people want to propose. Normally, we look at this and we have an ability to say yes or no. And it seems it's arduous to have to go through this and approve things that everybody agrees on anyways. But I think it's, have to make it an option for anybody that wants to make a change in anything in this budget to say now or forever hold your peace, because if this motion passes, that's going to be the budget. Ms. Spofford?
Kathleen Spofford, 312 Main Street. So my question is, if you go to the bargaining table with the unions and you don't negotiate the cuts that's reflected in the budget, which is the override amount, what will the override amount be? So the override amount could actually fluctuate according to what is negotiated at the table with the unions. Is that correct?
Comments, questions come on the budget. Ms. Goodrich or Mr. Mui?
The way I understand it is that the number stays the same. How is taken out? I'll give you two examples. Say that everybody decided no salary and wage increase. That would be one way to take that number out. Another would be to reduce hours. That is what is up to the unions, from my understanding. So the number stays the same. How it is taken out of those salaries and wages is what is up for negotiation. Am I correct? Okay.
All right. Comments come on the motion. Ma'am?
Mary Small, 317 Townsend Hill Road. I've got a question. The number you just read out on the new motion...
Speak right into the mic, please.
The number you just read out on the new motion doesn't seem to match the number that I have on my handout.
Right. I noticed that, too. And I believe it's because we did vote to reduce the budget by 18,000 for, was it? Oh, that was, oh, that's right. That failed.
Yes, it's a second attempt. Just by...
Okay. All right. So that...
Did that fail, John?
That did fail, right? Yeah. Hold on.
Reduct?
Yeah. My notes was that the motion to cut failed.
Okay. So then the number would be 27,592,926. Sorry, Kim.
Okay. Which is as printed in the budget.
So, Mr. Moderator, if I may, I'll read the motion corrected.
Yep.
The motion would read, "The motion to accept the fiscal '26 budget without the override of 27,592,926 as a total and represented by each functional segment as stated in the list above." And I will give you page three that I'm working from. So that each section, each section will be represented, whether it be general government, public safety, education, highway, streets, solid ways, so on and so forth. It would be 27,592, John, 926, because you said the 18,000 failed. So it's had to stay in.
92, right, 92.
I'm hearing voices. What's that?
And that is going to leave us with reductions that are not reflected in the actual budget, right? Okay. Where those reductions are in the general, in the, based on the, those reductions are, what, in the functional segment section?
Chief, you're voting in with the reduction.
That shows the reduction?
Yes. Yeah, but it doesn't show where the reduction is.
So that number, how we got to that number is based on, that number that Chief Shepherd just read, is, refers to the fact that we are effectively adopting the reductions that are shown on page four of the omnibus budget, showing a reduction for general government of 27,619, public safety has a reduction of 138,000, highways and streets at 63,000 in round change, round numbers, human services cut 13,000, and culture and recreation 15,000, for the total cuts of 258. Well, the motion, effectively, that's the number, though. That's how we get to that number, right? 27,592.
Point of clarification.
Ms. Rahala?
Thank you. Leslie Rahala, 57 Barker Hill Road.
Yeah.
Leslie Rahala, 57 Barker Hill Road. I'd like to move the question as set forth by Mr. Shepherd.
Okay. The motion's been made to move the question on the motion.
For 27,592,926 to be approved.
Okay. Motion's been made to move the question.
Can we re-read the motion for clarity, sir?
I think we're cutting off debate. We'll read it over. First, we've got to find out if people want to hear more. All those that want to move the question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
All right. The ayes have it. Chief Shepherd, do you have that motion in writing?
The motion to read, "The motion to accept the fiscal '26 budget without the override to read the amount of 27,592,926 total in each function to be stated in the functional segment as listed above." Motion by Shepherd, seconded by Craven.
Can you read that last part, chief? Again, as far as the functional, what is...
Each function to be as stated in the functional segment listed above. Right, no, no.
Go to it by department.
Does it matter?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, each, about, okay. So you're adopting the reductions in the functional segment reductions?
I think that was, is that Jeff Peduzzi that made that? Hi, Jeff. So I heard what you said, Jeff. So maybe, Mr. Moderator, and I hate to be waffling, but trying to be expeditious to this and hit all the high notes, the motion to accept the fiscal '26 budget without the override of 27,592,926 total and each function to be as stated in the department for each representative functional segment as listed above.
Okay, that's the motion.
No. Can...
I wanted, I heard someone else say words.
Ms. Lloyd, if you could use the mic.
Wait. We...
I just heard someone else say, this is Sandra Lord. I just heard someone else say what I'm thinking, and I heard other people, too. What exactly does all that mean?
Well, I'm not going to try to touch that. Let the chief expound.
Okay, thank you.
So Katie's pointed out something I think that's very appropriate. And it may go against this attempt, but I think everyone should be aware, we're all smart enough for that. Katie tells me that we could be ultimately forcing our hand for a debate about whether or not the appropriateness of an override tonight. I personally am in favor of an override, because we cannot have $1.2 million reduction in a municipal budget in a 11-month period. But I understand where Katie's coming from. I'm the eternal optimist, and believe me, I step on plenty of landmines attempting to get to the finish line. If there's a way, I would still attempt to put this override, this budget without the override to a vote. If not, we go back to where we were. But knowing that as soon as that vote is taken, we're going to have to have a discussion whether or not, if an override passes, do we accept the fiscal '26 budget with the override? Is that right and appropriate, Katie? Katie's given me a little bit of a nod.
Right. Okay. So I think, I see this playing out, is if this motion is approved, then we have adopted a budget without the override. We will then move, we will recess this meeting and go to the special town meeting to see if the special town meeting will approve the override. If the override is approved, we'll go back to the annual town meeting and take up the budget again and possibly amend it to reflect the amount in the override. If the override does not pass in the special town meeting, we're done, except that we have to return to the annual to dissolve it. Does that comport with people's understanding?
No. So, lack of clarity. I'm trying to make it so that we have a budget. The budget without the override is all the way on the right. We had said that we would do it by department, not by function. Our assistant town accountant has been clear...
If I might, Ms. Craven, the problem is, as we were going through each department budget, there were no motions to change those numbers.
Because we were going with it that those numbers totaled, and I won't go into the fact that I asked for this in Excel multiple times so that I could add them myself for tonight, but I did not get that. I was going on the assumption that what we were totaling totaled the far-right number. But if we are being told that we did not vote in the reductions to make that happen because the left and the right numbers are the same, if I'm confused again, I go back to Kathy's motion in the beginning, dissolve and actually have a balanced budget that shows us a balanced budget and then an override budget. Because if all the numbers are the same throughout and just the bottom is the same, a difference, John, you tell me, what are we voting for? Do you understand it, Mr. Moderator?
I only understand that what's being proposed would give us a total amount of money that the Board of Selectmen would adjust the budget for.
I don't know what I'm voting on.
Or around.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Ms. Rahala?
We move the question and we end the debate. I find us in the middle of a debate.
I think, we were trying to get to clarification on the motion, but do we have the motion now in writing? We need the motion in writing, and I'm going to read it once, and then we're going to vote on it, because we did move the question on this.
And, Mr. Moderator, if I could...
Mr. Casa?
Once you get the motion in writing, I'd like to review it as well, just to be sure that it's in order.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, the motion is to accept the fiscal year '26 budget without the override of 27,592,926 total. And each function to, as stated in each department segment listed above, which is on the page three of the budget here, it shows the amounts that are being proposed per department. And this shows general government as 1,649,936, which is an 11% reduction, roughly. Public safety's 4,186,000, 4,186,360, which is a 1.7% increase. Does everybody have that page? Okay.
Adam, did you want to?
I'm okay with that.
All right. So, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Now I entertain a motion to, do we have anything left in the town meeting? I think, okay, is there, oh, Article 12. We needed Article 12 to vote the salaries of all. I think we started to, but I don't think we did it.
I thought we did.
Okay. All right. We already voted Article 12. So I'm going to look for a motion to recess the annual town meeting until the conclusion of the special town meeting. Is there a motion?
No move.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded?
Aye.
All right. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, say no. All right. The ayes have it. The annual town meeting stands in recess, and we will resume the special town meeting. I believe it's Article 5. Article 5. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate... To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $258,827 for general fund budget expenses for the fiscal year 2026 to fund wages, salaries, and benefits to the town for the fiscal year 2026. Such appropriation to be contingent upon the town's approval at an election of a proposition two and a half override, so-called under Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), or taking any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Sheffrin.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $258,827 for general fund budget expenses for fiscal year 2026 to fund wages, salaries, and benefits to the town for fiscal year 2026. Such appropriation to be contingent upon the town's approval at an election of a proposition two and a half override, so-called under Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Is there anything to be said? Mr. Shepherd.
Am I on, John?
Yeah, I can hear you.
I got airplane ear, so if you can't hear me, folks, I can't hear myself either. This is for the override, just stating, correct?
Correct.
So I think there's been, in the past three months, a tremendous amount of tension and pitting that's gone on. From the Fire EMS side, we have studied this, and we do study this every month, and we harass Katie a couple times a month to just to make sure that we understand. So the information that I'm giving you may be specific to our internal research and monitoring that we track and trail our budget. However, I believe it's most appropriate to be able to outline, and this is where I was prepared to go, in the event that we were going to, and the Fire EMS, look at a $90,000 reduction. So what's the elephant in the room without scare tactics? I think there is a need for an effective education in municipal service. That's our attempt tonight. We are a community. We can't function with just a school. We can't function with just municipality. I hear the noise of no more overrides, no more money, the town can't, the town is wasting money. I think if you were to go to any department head, any operating segment of the town, you would find a very effective and very efficient group. We're going to disagree on that, but that's okay. I look at it like this. Last year, at this time, we were reasonably balanced. And then August of 2024, we've heard much about transparency, but it was August of '24, special town meeting, where we had to balance the budget because the numbers did not come in. The increase to the North Middlesex Regional School District. Now, I was the vice chairman of the school building in Kennedy for nine years. I'm not anti-school. But in August of '24, we took $606,000 out of the Townsend operating budget, which resulted in the purple bags. We all have an opinion on purple bags. But we had to fund the school because in the regional school district, we own the school regardless. Ashby and Pepper passed it. We were forced into it. The way that the decision was made, in hindsight, folks may not like it, it was done. We had to take $606,000 out of our operating and scramble to try to balance that. In March of 2025, I will give the folks that did this credit. However, I do not approve of how it was done. I think it was done violently, without a lot of conversation, and certainly not a lot of research. We approved $200,000 from free cash and $411,000 out of operating. We took $1,217,185 out of the Townsend Municipal Operating Budget in the past 12 months. It is unsustainable at that rate. The budget for North Middlesex coming up, and I've had these conversations with Brad, Superintendent of Schools, I've said, Brad, how can you endorse or support this type of behavior? We are defunding the Town of Townsend. He says, well, I don't. I won't put words in his mouth. We've had some spirited conversations. However, the 2026 budget is a request of 7%. So at the 2% that everyone else is living with, it would be $287,000. The 7% is an additional $644,900. So it would turn out to be $913,000. Where Katie go? She could confirm that, but she's, I don't know where she went. So the short is, the district is also slated to receive an additional $1.5 million in the supplemental budget, which I believe has been approved. And the percentage increase that Townsend would be contributing in addition to the 1.2 is $600,000. That's a $1,817,000 increase to the school district budget, while the town has actually gone backwards. While the municipal operating budget reduced at that 1.2 million, there is no silver bullet, folks. If this override budget, which we just passed, has to be enacted, there will be cuts. I can tell you that a $90,000 reduction in fire services would be devastating. We operate at a $1.7 million budget. We have 9,500 people, less than 10,000 people in the Town of Townsend. I use AIR as a reflective point. AIR has 8,500 people. They run four people around the clock. We run two people around the clock. AIR gives back $600,000 out of their ambulance reserve receipt account. Last year, we gave $900,000. This year, we slated to give $700,000. There is a reason for this. So the Townsend's emergency budget is 1.7. Everybody in the Town of Townsend is effectively acting the same way. I think the budget process that we go through, if nothing from the pain of this year, having three different budgets, we should be starting off each December, not just with a department budget, what we should be starting off with the budget that we're finishing. It will eliminate tremendous amounts of confusion. Internally, we see that. We go from our budget, our department budget, into the selectmen budget. We look at the FinCom budget. We come up with an omnibus budget. I think it'd be simpler to have one more. I know that folks are ready to move on with this. I just think it's very important that we recognize that there is a tremendous need. There is no silver bullet coming down the road, and without the override, at 70, I think it's, Katie, where'd you go? Oh, is it 260,000 or 300,000 is around $75 a household? $75 a household, short money. In my personal opinion, I would have doubled it to 600,000 at $150. That's $15 a month, and that's a couple cups of coffee, and it keeps everybody in place. The alternate budget, I'm sorry, whether you want to use the term rolled up or not, when you do massive straight reductions like that, that are arbitrary, there is no way that you're going to avoid not having people impacted. I can tell you from Fire EMS, if I open that budget and I say to the folks that we have that are in very high demand, that we're going to do a reduction in your salary, we will not have a department. Right now, we have a very strong department within the region, and whether it affects us, whether it affects the senior senator, the library, counseling on aging, recreation, it's all the same impact, folks. So we've already now invested into the school. We've invested $1.2 million, and in order to be able to maintain some level of municipal service, I think it is incumbent upon us, and I think that we are almost having our hand forced to do that. The inflation since 2020, as a scholastic economics person, where I got my bachelor's, is 20.3%. We've had a 20.3% increase in our cost of living. The Town of Townsend can't make it work on 2%. Happy to answer questions. Thank you for listening at this time of the night. Good luck.
Comments come on the motion of Article V. Is there any further discussion? Yeah.
Becky Zagami, 6 Edward Road. I think everybody really needs to know the truth about a two and a half override. Okay, because we've gone down this road before with Trash, and look where we are with Trash. Okay? You want a two and a half override? It's only committed for one year to the cause. After that, the Board of Selectmen can do whatever they want with that money. I don't think that's a solution. So I think the town people really know how, need to know how a two and a half actually works. And, correct me if I'm wrong, that $15 or $75, doesn't that go up every year? 2% every year. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion. Anything else to be said? Finance Committee, Ms. Churchville?
Yes. Where is the question? The question is, why do they recommend against the override?
All right. Comments come from Finance about the override. Is there any questions? Ms. Lizio?
We get more from the Finance Committee. Why do they recommend?
Question comes from the floor. The question is, could we get more information from the Finance Committee as to their recommendation against the, why do they recommend against the override?
The recommendation, not the override, which was this goal, one of the, you know, weekly cuts for the override. Is that as opposed to the one that we're arguing with the numbers?
We don't have an FY27 budget, but I believe the numbers look like you will be looking at another deficit into FY27. We think we need a longer-term solution, not just a one-year budget.
Comments come on the question. Mr. Rideout?
Bill Rideout, 88 South Harbor Road. In general, overrides are very important issues, and I really feel that they should be decided by the voters. So I, you know, whether I'm for it or against it, I'm not even going to say, but I would generally support putting it in front of the voters. So that's my opinion.
Comments come on the motion. Ms. Craven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So overrides are very hot topics. They are very difficult. We are still discussing the 2001 override from Trash and the anger that is occurring within our community that Trash has taken out. Public safety is important, and to talk to what Gary was speaking as the fire chief, I'd love to see a proposal from the fire department that says we need X, Y, Z. Staff up five more people to run another truck. Put that in front of us. Articulate it. I'll support you all day long. To have a general override of just a number to the Board of Selectmen to place where they want, I can't support that. A very specific override for a need, police, fire, the library, the council on aging, if it's very specific, like is detailed from DOR and DLS, that an override can be very specific and hopefully held to that all day long, support you. But from what I've seen, unfortunately, grant deadlines missed, grants that were here that were not fully exhausted before moving to the next grant, money sitting on the table. I would like a level set so that FinCom can fully look at it. Before we go to an override, we do not have enough information. We don't even know what the cuts would be. That's why I say we should not be voting for an override.
Ms. Lizio, I didn't recognize your point of order because I don't know what your point of order was. It wasn't off-topic. It was in addressing whether or not she supported an override vote. That is what we're to do now. I don't think, is there anyone else who has anything to say? Oh, Ms. Kell.
Someone in the audience?
If you, if you don't, all right. Matt, okay. Quite frankly, I can barely see anybody raise their hands with the lighting in here. Sometimes I can see you, sometimes I can't. So if you want to speak, if I don't see you, step up to the microphone.
Leroy Boucher, Main Street. This is about $90,000 that the fire department could be without. The level of EMTs that we have and the equipment, without that, I wouldn't be here. They worked their guts out to bring me back. And I just, there's other things that I'm against with the override, but to take away the money they need for life-saving equipment and skilled personnel, it's a shitty way to learn that your loved one passed just for $75 a month. It's a lot of money. I'm on a fixed income, a lot of us are, but it'd be real crappy to be sitting at an empty dining room table. So I have to vote for it. That's all.
Comments come on the motion. All right. Ms. Kell?
I just wanted to say that we have done everything we can. The department heads have done everything they can. The department heads have done everything they can under the expenses side. The only place that we can do further cuts is on the salary and hours side. We would prefer not to cut any hours or salaries or positions or anything, which is the reason we're asking for the override. It is to support salaries and wages, and every town employee deserves to have what our contracts promised them. And so I would encourage everybody to vote for the override, support the people that take care of our community in more ways than one, in all the areas, whether you have small children in rec or you use inner library loan in the library. It's important, and we wouldn't be asking for it if we didn't absolutely need it. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion. Ma'am?
Becky Zagami, 6 Edward Road. So the cuts to public safety is $138,000, but the Board of Selectmen is asking for $260,000. So where's this $260,000 going?
Comments come on, the question comes on the, where's the money going?
They don't know where it's going. But it's just an amazing psychological thing.
And the comments, Mr. Mui?
So in your handout, we break down what the override total entails. The 258, 827 that you, that we're voting on, we break it down by each functional segment. Now, I think we've mentioned multiple times that we can't specify what department or what position or individual those cuts would be affecting. So this is the best we can do in terms of revealing to the voters where the reductions are coming from. Yes, $138,404 is coming from public safety, but public safety is not just, you know, fire. There's police, and the building department is in public safety as well. So that's about all we can reveal in terms of where the reductions are coming from.
Okay. Comments come on the motion. Sir? Yeah?
Chris Thoreau, 102 Pierce Road. Through you to the town administrator, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
How do we know that the, for the public safety cuts, 138,404, how do we know that 90,000 of that will hit fire in EMS? How do we, the voters, know that?
Question comes on the motion, Mr. Mui.
That 90,000 is not a number that's in our budget. I think what the chief was referring to was probably the alternative budget where that 90,000 was proposed. So the select board's budget, we do not specify how much is affecting the fire department. The 90,000 that the chief is referring to was the alternative budget that's been proposed.
And which budget is that?
That's the Finance Committee's budget.
Point of clarity, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Craven?
Thank you. This is a very direct yes or no question to the town administrator. If an override goes through, there's no obligation to where you are placing the money because the override question is just to the general budget. In the recommended language for overrides, there's a host of different ways that you can word an override. You could have very specifically used the numbers that you cut each functional segment, even though we asked you to go by department. even though we asked you to go by department, but you did not. You asked for a whole number, and we rounded, someone rounded to 260, but it's listed as This is a yes or no question. You did not specify where the override would go, so you can place it on any department that you want. Yes or no?
Okay, question's been made, and is there a reply, Mr. Mui?
No, that is not what we intend to do. And if you look at the article itself, it says to fund wages, salaries, and benefits. So...
To be clear, maybe I should ask this to Attorney Costa. In guidance from the state, we can make an override question be specific to the year and instructive to the Board of Selectmen that the override would be specific to a department, and for that first year, they would have to allocate that money to those departments. When it is to a general fund, that 258 is not obligated to any specific department, but to any department under the general fund.
Question comes on the motion, I think directed to Mr. Costa, Town Council.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So, so the answer to your question is yes, but I'm, I'm not going to give you just a yes or no answer because...
All I wanted was yes or no, though, Adam.
I, I understand that, but I still, excuse me, I still have the floor.
I know.
Ms. Craven?
I was teasing.
Ms. Craven, I'm not going to tolerate this anymore. You will let the speaker speak before you interrupt them. If you do it again, I'm going to ask you to be escorted out of the building. This is enough. I've had it. So it's... Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So it's, it's somewhat more complicated than that. It's true that the Department of Revenue provides guidance in multiple documents as to how a, an override question is structured for the ballot. But there are two components to every override. There's the function of town meeting, which is to appropriate the funds, and there's the function of the voters at the ballot box, which is to authorize the exceedance of the levy limit to allow for that additional taxation authority to create the funds that are being appropriated. So the previous speaker is correct in stating that the way that, as I understand it, the question for the ballot box has been structured, it is general in scope. It is not specific to individual departments, and I, I believe part of the rationale for that, because I've discussed it with the select board, is what we've already discussed tonight, which is the reality that we don't know exactly where, within the budget, the cuts are going to be made based upon future negotiations with union personnel and with the union, the unions themselves. But the function of this particular warrant article that is presently before town meeting is to appropriate those funds with as much specificity as we currently have. I recognize it's not as much specificity as some of you would like. It's frankly not as much specificity as I might like, but it is the specificity that the select board believes and that I have counseled the select board and my colleague as labor counsel has counseled the select board, we can, we, we believe that we can provide at this stage in the process. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Comments come from Town Council. Chief Shepherd?
Hello. Thank you, John. Would it maybe appease a few folks if the warrant article council were to itemize what the functional segment increases would be if the override were to pass? Because clearly, the work begins after the approval tonight, because it could still fail at the ballot, and they'll have to be a fair amount of time in educating people how and what this is going to be used for. So the question again, Mr. Moderator, is, is it appropriate to add into that warrant article where the allocation of that 258,827 goes as outlined in the fiscal '26 budget override question?
All right, I'm going to recognize Ms. Goodrich.
I think a motion to amend the Article 5 as follows. Let me just make sure I do this right. To fund budget expenses for fiscal year 2026, to fund wages, salaries, and benefits as follows. General government, 27,619. Public safety, 138,404. Highway and streets, 63,395. Human services, 13,886. Culture and recreation, 15,523, for a total of 258,827.
Okay, motion is made to amend the motion on Article 5. Anything to be said on the motion to amend? As we're ready to vote, all those in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, the motion is amended.
Point of order, was there a second on that motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So the amended motion is before you. Anything to be said? Appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion to vote for, to have the two and a half override for the total amount of 258,827 to be expended as previously stated in the motion to amend. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, I think counters can come out again, and we need one more counter because, oh, that's right, Jac. Okay, Jac, you got to get sworn in. We have, we still have Brian, Brian and Becky. Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please stand.
Do you think this is a true ruling that people are named after?
Those who want to vote no on the motion, please stand. Okay, folks, the tally is 78. Aye, 42, no. The motion, yeah, the motion carries. Hold on, kind of have a, now, I think we can recess. I've got to double-check the Town Council. Am I incorrect? It's assuming that it's a, a majority vote on just a override, right?
Correct. That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
That's what I thought. Okay, majority vote carries. So we can recess or dissolve the special town meeting? The motion?
I'll make a motion to dissolve the special town meeting.
All right, a motion made to dissolve the special town meeting. All those, anything, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, the special town meeting is dissolved. That brings us back to the annual town meeting, which I think we can also dissolve. No, we, we did vote on Article 12 last time. Yeah. Is there anything else to come before the body? The town clerk has it recorded that we voted on Article 12. Yeah. Motion's been made to dissolve the annual town meeting. All those in favor, oh, there's a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for hanging in there for three meeting nights.